Welcome, everybody. It's 7:04 PM. I'll call this meeting to order. If you'd please stand and repeat with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For if you call roll, please.
Yes, Councilmember Glover?
Here.
Billings?
Here.
Gettle?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
And Robinson?
Here.
Thank you. Chief Larson, who would usually give our Unified Fire Authority Department report, was unable to make it tonight, so we're not going to have that item, and instead at our next meeting, we're going to double up. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And then, next up, we've got the Hillcrest Youth Conference Report. Come on up. If you would just please state your name, so it's on the record.
My name's Kim Price, and I am the Hillcrest Youth Football...
Will you pull the microphone just a little closer to you, just so we make sure if anybody online can hear you?
The perks of being vertically challenged. I'm the District President for the Youth Football League, so...
Thank you for being here.
I just wanted to say hello to Mayor Stevenson and the rest of the City Council. We appreciate you letting us stop by today to express our appreciation for all that the city does for our youth football program. Again, my name's Kim Price, and I've been a member of the Football Board for the last seven years. This is my third year as the District President, and so it's been a little bit. And I also have a few of our board members and a couple of our players with us today, so if you don't mind, I'd like to just introduce them. I'll just have them stand if that's okay. So... You guys get to stand up. So, the first in the front is my husband, Dalwin Price. He's our Field Manager. My son Caleb, who was on our Bantam team this past year. Next to him is Lucas Stewart, who was on our Gridiron Team. Oh, sorry, Mighty Might. I just want to make him older than he is. Jaycee Listenbee is our Treasurer, and Jeremy Listenbee is our Assistant Field Manager. Behind him is our newest board member. He just was put on this year. He's going to be switching places with Jeremy. Sorry, Jeremy is actually our... What? Speak up. Equipment Manager. Sorry, a little frazzled. And Cody is taking over as Assistant Field Manager. Sorry. And beside Cody is his son Abe, who is also on the Gridiron Team. So, thanks, you guys. We'll try not to take up too much of your time, but we thought it was important to let you know how much we appreciate the support of the city. Our district is the feeder program into the Hillcrest High School football team. We support athletes from the age of seven to fourteen, basically first through eighth grade, that live within the Hillcrest boundaries. That area covers seven elementary schools and three middle schools. With the continued support of Midvale City, we're able to provide approximately forty players an opportunity to play a sport within the past two years. You guys have been partners with us actually quite a bit longer. Mr. Dahl and I were just talking, and I know that, I believe it's been over fifteen years, just kind of looking over past records. So, but I'm just going to be accountable for the last two. In 2022, we had thirty-one players out of a hundred and five that were on the scholarship program, so that was 29.5%. And then in 2023, we had twenty-one out of eighty-five players, which is 24.7% that were on scholarship. That's roughly $8,000 in scholarship funding. Of the budgeted amount that the city offers, you reimbursed us $4,200, excuse me, $4,200, which is very, very appreciated. The rest of the funds just come from fundraising that we do at the beginning of each season. So, that takes a big burden off of the kids for having to come up with those extra funds and their families. We budget, excuse me, we budget fifteen city scholarships per season due to the city's budget being July through June. Our registration usually begins in February, so we try to do February, excuse me, February to June fifteen, and then the next season, we just kind of carry over what's left to the next February through June thirtieth. So, part of the scholarship agreement is that parents volunteer at least ten hours of service during the season, and I can guarantee you our families do more than that. Five out of ten of our current board members have players who have either received or are currently receiving a scholarship, myself included. I don't volunteer because I have to. It's because I've seen the way that this program has helped both of my sons and other players... Sorry if I get emotional, too. Both of my sons and other players develop on and off of the field. Our coaches teach life-altering lessons that these kids can use as they grow and become responsible, active members of the community. Through this volunteering process, we've gotten to know some of these families very well. I'd like to share a couple examples of how this program helps these families off the field. One example is, we have a mom who recently went through a divorce due to domestic abuse and violence. Her now ex-husband is in prison due to assault and attempted murder. She has two young boys. When I first met these young men, they were a little bit mouthy, a little bit crazy, and they could be very disrespectful at times, including to their mom. Their coach knew of their situation and started reaching out to see if there was anything he could help with. Over the course of the past two years, both boys have begun to excel on their teams and have been learning to be respectful and not to treat people in a way that they wouldn't want to be treated. Their coaches have also talked with them about how to respect their mom and other women. My second example is a single mom whose husband passed away about three years ago. Her son is a very quiet boy, but he loves football. She supports him along with her other four children. They have a limited income, and she said that without the scholarship, she wouldn't be able to afford for her son to play. One of her older sons even assists in coaching, so he and his brother have more time together. I believe their dad also played football, so it's a good connection they have to him. I know there are many examples I could share. We don't know the intimate details on every player's situation. We do know that we live in an area that without, where without programs like these, it gives time for kids to find other sorts of distractions or entertainment. One of these negative distractions can be seen in the graffiti that's left on our fences, buildings, and other areas of the city. Another example I've experienced... Sorry, this one was on my older son's team, where he got involved with drugs in middle school. His parents chose... Sorry, good to be a baby. His parents chose football to help him to avoid the opportunities to be around people who were trying to influence him to use. They also informed the coach so that he could help in whatever manner he could. Fortunately, this young man was able to turn around and move forward. Because of this, too, his younger brother loved watching him play and later joined when he was old enough. We started seeing more of this positive movement in our players. Last year, we had two to three of the Bantam... Those are the thirteen and fourteen-year-old boys that are eighth grade, offered to mentor the younger teams and assist them during practices. We've also had a team assistant at Utah Food Bank, which has sparked a district-level desire to start doing monthly service projects that all of our teams can assist with. The high school team is also working with us to have team mentors so that we have a connection as the players start to get older and age into their program. When these kids have positive distractions, it helps them to build their character, develop self-esteem, become better friends, and also lets them see for themselves they have potential to do more and to be more if they choose to. During our president's meeting with the conference, I've heard other districts having issues with finding fields to play on. Cities are charging thousands of dollars to play just four weekends during our twelve-week playing season. They also don't have the proper fields to hold practice sessions and things like that. We're very fortunate to be allowed to use the city park for these things. We've actually had multiple districts reach out to me after events to express their appreciation and to comment on how nice our fields are. I would also like to share those accolades with the city. I usually work with Susie Grant, Sherry Reynolds, and Glenn Kennedy during the season. They're always quick to respond and easy to work with in any situation. We also had two instances last year where our equipment sheds were tagged with graffiti, and I know I talked to the mayor about that. So, as soon as it was made known to the city, it was taken care of. I was so impressed. On one occasion, it was actually the city that reached out to me to let me know that it had happened. As I was trying to figure out how to take care of it, by the time I got to the park, it had already been taken care of for us. So again, we appreciate that. In closing, I once again just wanted to thank the city for their involvement with our program. We'd also like to extend a personal invitation to any practice, any tailgate dinner, and any game that you'd like to come to. Our season officially begins on July 25th, but you'll be seeing us conditioning at the park beginning in May and then over at the high school between now and May 1st. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kim. Just so you know, as we give money to some organizations, this group being one of them, we've often asked them to come present to us. Kim actually reached out to me and said, "I want to come and present." So, I really appreciate you reaching out and taking the time. I did just want to invite you in the group if you want to take a quick photo. Throw everybody into that. If y'all want to come up here, we can stand here, and maybe that'll work, instead of everybody trying to sit up here. If that's okay with all of you.
Yeah, we're right with that.
Just line up right along. Actually, let's stick it to this side. Rory, we're going to stick it to this side. TV, this isn't in the way. They should have just stayed real close.
Mayor, you're going to have to stand really tall.
I'm not that tall.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all for taking the time. We appreciate it. All right. With that, we'll move into public comments. So, if any person is wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda tonight, they may address the City Council at this point by stepping forward to the microphone and stating their name for the record.
Hello, my name is Sophie Schwankel, and I'm a high school student. I talked to your Healthy Community Coalition earlier today, and I'm here right now to ask you guys to ban airsoft guns in public parks. So, a little bit about airsoft guns. They're always manufactured with an orange cap, but once an airsoft gun can be... Once someone owns an airsoft gun, they can easily remove it, and that is legal, which, when an airsoft gun is removed, airsoft guns appear to be realistic firearms, which can cause fear in the community if they see something that appears to be like a firearm in a public park. So, not only is seeing airsoft guns mentally traumatizing, but it could also cause physical harm, because if someone isn't wearing protective clothing, an airsoft gun can cause welts on like skin, or if it gets in the eye, it can cause blindness or scratches, which is not good. And so, not only are airsoft guns mentally traumatizing and can be physically harming in public parks, but it can also lead to death. Young adults all over the country have been killed by police because police are unable to distinguish between a real firearm and an airsoft gun with an orange cap removed or painted black. This includes someone in Utah in West Valley, which is pretty close, which kind of shows how it doesn't just... It can happen anytime, anywhere, which is why we want to make sure that our public parks are safe and that we protect our community from possible fear and trauma from seeing airsoft guns in parks. North Ogden, Ogden, Centerville, South Dorn, and South Ogden already have restricting usage of airsoft guns, which kind of shows that if some cities in our county, in our state, already have these laws, we should extend them to other cities so that all of our public parks can be safe. I spoke to South Dorn's Police Chief, Jeff Carr, who explained to me how they're able to enforce this law and how their police are able to take an educational approach with less serious cases and kind of educate people with why bringing airsoft guns is not a smart idea to public parks, or they're able to criminally charge people with more serious cases. I'm here to ask you to ban airsoft guns in public parks to create safer public parks. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sophie. And even before your three minutes was up, just so, Councils aware, Sophie came and met with me, Vanessa, our new Youth Violence Coalition Coordinator, some others from Salt Lake County, and presented this idea, and I encouraged her to come to our council meeting tonight and come give public comments. So, thank you for being here.
Chief, is that an issue? She mentioned, you know, with cops, I wouldn't mind, you know, hearing your thoughts on that as well. I mean, it sounds like a... It sounds like I would not want to accidentally have a blacked-out one or something for that purpose.
No, she's brought up several good points. As far as our parks, I don't know that I've ever heard one at our parks, but as you know, during like our festivals, I've asked that the vendors not sell even play guns, anything like that, which she's very accurate when she says that these airsoft guns look exactly like a real firearm. And even to the point where we've seen criminals that have taken real firearms and tried to make them look like airsoft guns, too. So, absolutely, I would support her in the fact that they're very lifelike, and in a fraction of a second, if an officer or a citizen has to make, you know, a deadly force decision, yeah, it could be very bad. And we've seen several, even along our corridor, where we've taken people into custody with what we thought were firearms, and these are bad people, and they still carry an airsoft, which will get them shot or injured just as quick. So...
Appreciate putting you on the spot like that, and I wasn't second-guessing you either. I just felt like having the, you know, police chief say something as well on it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll move into reports. I feel like usually I have a whole list. I do not have a whole list today. I will say, we had our Fort Union Corridor study at Ganesh Indian Cuisine the other day. I was so impressed with the turnout, and I feel like a lot of the times when we hold these kind of open houses, there's a lot of concern from residents of like, "Why are we even looking at changing an area?" But this one being on the 7200 South Corridor, especially, it was split up into three chunks from, starting from I-15 and kind of working its way up to the Fort Union area, and especially around I-15 and 7200 South, it was pretty interesting just to see that every resident I spoke to was, maybe some disagreements on what we should do, but everybody said, "Oh, yeah, no, we need to do something different with that area." And so, there was a lot of excitement about that we were looking into that and trying to figure out what we could realistically do. So, just really appreciate that. Appreciate all the time that staff put into that. We had really good turnout. On that note, we have a very exciting transportation master plan. I have a little QR code here. I don't actually know when it closes, but we have, we're doing a transportation master plan survey. I haven't taken it myself yet, but I need to, and I would encourage any other resident to take it as well. We take these seriously and make sure that we are trying to follow through on what residents want to see as we continue to plan for years and years to come. Councilmember Gettle, you're going to take it right now. That's great.
Page not found. That's not good.
Well, we'll figure that out. And I swear I had one more thing. This is what happens when I have too many papers. Oh, our call for artists for the Los Muros on Main, our third annual Midvale City Mural Festival, opened today. So, if anybody is a muralist out... So if anybody is a muralist out there, you're inspiring a muralist, we are taking call for that as we do that, and here in a couple, have that festival here in a few months from now. And then lastly, for the council, the UPD interlocal, we should see that on our council agenda at our next council meeting, but the UPD board will actually be voting on that, on that interlocal tomorrow. At this point, Copperton, Magna, Kearns, and White City have all passed resolutions stating that they are going to stay with UPD. They have not ratified the interlocal yet because the board has not passed it, but they have all passed resolutions saying that they are planning to stay with UPD. So, just so you know, I think we have felt good about that, but it's great to see these councils actually continue to take that action. I think the only one that is still telling us they are considering their options is Immigration Canyon. So, that's all I've got. Councilmember Glover?
Just wondering on the legislature, now that it's over with, when we'll have an update on how it affected us?
We'll have, plan on having that at the next city council meeting.
Okay. Because I know that the townships and a bunch of stuff was decided at that legislature that should affect us somewhat.
Yeah, there was just a lot, and we're trying to wrap our heads around, heads and hands, that was a combination word there, around that and how to present that to you in a meaningful way. We'll also work on having spadophores come to that as well.
Okay, good, thank you. That's all this evening. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Billings?
I just, I don't have too much in my district. I just wanted to wish Councilmember Gell a happy birthday tomorrow.
Councilmember Gell?
I want to wish Councilmember Billings a happy birthday today. So we have three Pisces, I believe, up here on council, and so we're well represented with the-
That really explains a lot about this council.
The fish signs. I wanted to mention, I wanted to thank, you know, you guys for the youth, the youth football, well, also the youth football conference report. I think that's very important. I know, I know it looks like it, but I was a pretty good youth football player myself until, as I was telling Councilmember Glover, the bodies kept getting bigger, mine kind of stayed the same. So, you know, once eighth grade hit, that was about, that was the highlight of my football career. So we definitely appreciate that report and for what you guys do. The other thing I wanted to mention, you know, just in my own travels over the past few months, some of you know that I am campaigning for a different office, which I don't count, I don't really talk about in these council meetings, but one positive thing I wanted to share about that is, you know, Midvale has a very good reputation among different county elected officials, and I think that's important that we recognize that other elected officials out there are really seeing the steps that we're taking in Midvale and are appreciating what we're doing. So, you know, sometimes we're here in our bubble, and we know that the things that we're doing seem to be improving people's lives, but, you know, that's one thing that I've noticed over the past few months is there's a lot of elected officials and just community leaders who will come up to me and specifically, sometimes not to put you on the spot, Mayor Stevenson, but a lot of folks just say how great you are at representing the community. So I wanted to put that on the public record and thank you in particular, but, you know, all of us and city staff as well. You know, we are quite the, the city moving on up, I believe. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes, I have a couple things. Happy birthday to the fellow Pisces, I guess I should say that as well. A few things though, Oak Street has a, I don't know if it's like a landscaping business or something that now is on there, but they're parking these two landscaping vehicles on both sides of Oak, which is a bus route, which in the morning is, is become like a pretty big nightmare. I avoid it. I even drop my elementary school kids off now on the junior high side because it's gotten so bad. I don't know what we can even do, but I've had a lot of people complain to me about it, that this Oak Street narrow passage is, you know, it was always, it's always been tight, but having these two sort of bigger vehicles has caused a lot of anxiety for parents dropping off their kids. So I don't know what, what our process is or whatever. On that note, and I don't know, again, this is sort of school related, on Center Street, there is a sign with the F, or a flag hanging with the F-word on it, which, you know, everyone has their freedom of speech, First Amendment, but I found out yesterday that that's a, a school bus stop for the, it's the last stop for an elementary school. So this elementary school bus pulls up next to this house, has this big flag flying the F-word on it, you know, and I don't know if we talked to the school board, the school district about it, the school about it, you know, I don't, you know, I watched it, this older man walks his kid out, and all the kids are staring at this flag, and I just don't know if that's really what, you know, we want, you know, for at least a school bus stop. It's not like we can tell him what to put on his property or not, but I would like to talk to the school about that, if you guys know how. Because again, the bus has to stop there, and all the kids are just staring at it, and just, it's very tacky. And then, and the last thing is, I feel like every once in a while, we have a few developers that are better partners than others in their building phase, and I've gotten a lot of complaints about those flex spaces on Millennial Way, you know, across from that Motel 6. The road is really, really dirty, but the big thing is their fences, you know. Granted, it's been windy, but like a couple days ago, I guess some of the fences were half blown over.
And the porta potties.
And the, see?
The fence is actually falling down every time that I go up.
I really appreciate it. We've got people online too, so if you just hold your comments to yourself, I just appreciate it, just so everybody can participate.
But, but the, I think yesterday, it was like half blown over, and so if you weren't noticing, you could have driven your windshield right through one, right? At least when it's on the ground, you kind of know. And they just seem to not care, they're on both sides of the road. It's almost like they're like, "This is our road, and you can, you, everyone else, you're allowed to drive on it." And I think we need to talk to them about, you know, "Hey, this is a public right of way, this is Midvale's," you know, kind of get your act together. Because, you know, as a comparison, the townhomes that are being built, where Joe Morley's was, I think they're phenomenal, you know. There, I don't see any mud leaving that property, and it's been muddy. You know, they've had to close the road temporarily for hookups, but it's like in and out. Sidewalk as well, you know, anyone using the sidewalks can use it, so it's not like I'm trying to just say all developers are evil or whatever, just some are better than others, and I'd like, if we can, if we can talk to them, because man, it's, it's pretty bad, I think, but.
We will both look at having our stormwater inspectors and whatnot go out there and check that out for swift reasons, and then we'll also have coenforcement lookout or, and, or engineering based on if it's a right of way permit issue, but we'll go ahead and check that out.
Because one of the issues is, and I still don't know why, maybe it's a fire lane, but the entire north side is red curved, right? So no, no residents from like Moda or anything ever parked there, but they're parking their whole, you know, employee, you know, everyone working there parks there, right? Just like, "Well, we don't care that this is a red curb," you know? And so it just seems, I just don't, I don't think they're good partners at the moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Dahl? First of all, I see that Rory added in Matt Dahl, City Manager underneath. It was never there before, so that means you safely have a job, at least for a minute. So congratulations.
You make that threat a lot. The, makes me feel like I should have to say something. I think really just quickly, I called most of you, Brian, we need to settle the conversation after this meeting, just on a couple things, but we had talked in those phone calls a little bit about the upcoming budget retreat. One of the things that we're going to be doing just a little bit differently is on the March 26th meeting, we'll be going over the community survey results. That'll be a primer leading into the budget retreat, which will be on the 28th, and calendar invites have been set up for that. And then what we'll be doing is using the April workshops to cover more of the in detail, in-depth department budget reports and those kinds of things. So it'll be a little bit different this year, kind of an experiment, but we think that it'll be a better process leading into this, but we'll definitely talk more about it, but I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that it really will have a different feel, but we'll continue to talk about that over time. I want to also offer up all the birthday wishes, and I think that covers it for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, we do have a public hearing tonight, so we'll move into that. Consider proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2024 general fund and other funds as necessary. As he comes up, Mr. Christian here gave us two weeks' notice today.
I did.
So I hope we all publicly shame him just a little bit. No, we're very thankful for you, Christian. He is going to move on to Holliday as their finance director. So big step up for him personally, very excited for him, and considering we're, you know, like we share a police department and a fire department with Holliday, I assume I will continue to see you around often in all these budgetary conversations, so.
Great.
But with that, take it away.
Yeah, I just want to start by saying, oh, start by saying I've loved my time at Midvale, and the next person who takes my job is going to be really lucky, so. Starting off with the budget for, this is the first budget for the fiscal year 2024 budget, and I just wanted to start off with a couple quick notes, sort of high level things about this amendment. First of all, fund balance is only being used for one-time expenditures. Everything that's ongoing is being used with ongoing monies. Second, several items which are part of this amendment are carryovers from prior fiscal years, so those are items which were budgeted in prior years but went unexpended, so we're just rolling that budget into 2024. And then finally, there is a new addition to this amendment, which was not part of the original presentation that I gave a couple weeks ago, and that is an increase to the Streets Department budget, and it is for a city-owned fence which was damaged and needed to be repaired. So starting with the general fund, the total funding sources, we have $276,000 with $35,000 coming from the Coalition Coordinator Grant, $46,000 increase to the budgeted sales tax, and an increase in use of fund balance of $195,000. The expenditures are general engineering, professional services of $26,000, communications increasing by $10,500, Public Works admin benefits are increasing by $25,000, that's just due to an employee's elected benefits changing during the year, planning and zoning professional services increasing by $29,000, community development professional services increasing by $21,500, special development projects increasing by $18,340, communications professional services increasing by $5,600, and software increasing by $45,000. Both of those are associated with the website redesign that we went through. And then the Parks overtime line item is increasing by $2,500, and then employee services is increasing by $12,500 for miscellaneous supplies. Continuing with the general fund, finance salaries, benefits, and education and travel are decreasing by $96,000, legal salaries, benefits, education and travel are increasing by 106. That was due to a finance position now being under the legal department. Human resource benefits and salaries increasing by $10,800, recorder salaries increasing by $4,300. This is due to two key employees being terminated, and those vacation payouts impacted those budgets. Next, community slash intergovernmental relations, the Youth Violence Safety Coalition admin increasing by $35,000. That's associated with this Coalition Coordinator Grant increase of $35,000, and that's just due to a Salt Lake County grant, more money being available than we originally budgeted at the start of the fiscal year. And then finally, the Streets Department repairs, maintenance, and supplies, that is the new item which I'd previously mentioned, which is for the repair of the city-owned fence. Next is capital projects, funding sources increasing, the total funding sources is $1.9 million with an increase in use of fund balance of $1.8 million, and a WFRC grant increasing by 105, and that's associated with another expenditure line item that's for 115, and there's a $10,000 city portion. So Public Works building renovation increasing by $10,000, House Bill 244 Transportation projects increasing by $500,000, Main Street utility upgrades $100,000, Midvale mural programs $23,000, city entryway signs $166,000, transportation master plan slash impact fee study $29,000, Parks Master Plan impact fee study $80,000, Fort Union Corridor Study $115,000, sidewalk curb and gutter replacement $5,200, and pavement management is increasing by $915,000. And I previously mentioned a large number of the projects being budgeted in prior fiscal years and being brought forward to 2024. That's especially true within the capital projects fund. Moving on to the water fund, we have an increase in professional services of $9,000. This is for water system modeling and engineering services, and it's going to be funded by a reduction in contribution to fund balance of $9,000. Next is the sewer fund, we have an increase of $50,000. This is to professional services, and it is for the sewer master plan, and it is also going to be funded by a decrease in contribution to fund balance. Next is the stormwater fund, we have an increase in use of fund balance of $41,400. This is made up of $34,400 of stormwater professional services, and it is for the stormwater master plan, and then we are increasing overtime by $7,000, just the need for callouts were greater than what we originally budgeted at the start of 2024. Next, the fleet fund, this one's a little bit different in that we have a decrease in contribution to fund balance as well as an increase in use of fund balance. So we have an increase of use of fund balance of $246, and then a decrease in contribution to of $295, and then the sale of fixed assets. So all of those funding sources together closer to $726,000 as a whole. So then, the increase to the Streets vehicle purchase, this is for $224,000, it is for a loader and a Ford F-150. Specifically, the loader is associated with the sale of fixed assets of $183,000. We have a buyback program where we'll buy the vehicle for a few years and then instantly, you know, a year or two later, sell it back for close to or exactly what we purchased it for. And that's a state contract. And then, next, the water fund, we have $329,000. This is for four Ford F-150s and a Ford 550. Parks vehicle purchases, $140,000, this is for a crossover, a Ford F-150, and a Chevy Colorado. Then we have Public Works admin vehicle purchase, this is for a crossover for $31,000, and as I'd previously mentioned, the reduction in contribution to fund balance. And specifically within the fleet fund, we did have several vehicles which were scheduled for replacement in prior fiscal years, but those vehicles weren't available, so we had to move that budget to 2024 so that we could make those vehicle purchases when they were available. Okay, next, the IT fund, the total funding sources, we have a use of fund balance of $21,000, and this is for software, $10,000 for software, which is for last-pass licenses. We have $11,000 for hardware, which is for iPads for engineering, computers for GIS, and council IT peripherals. Are there any comments or questions?
I'm going to say the thing I always say, which for anybody who's really paying attention to this, very exciting stuff, is that fund balance is our savings account.
That's not exciting to you? That was great.
It's pretty exciting.
Okay, well then.
Okay, we do have a public hearing on this, so unless there's any clarifying questions for Christian from the council, I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
May I motion, we open a public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, we will move into the public hearing. If there are any public comments on this item, you may now step forward to the microphones, state your name for the record, and you'll be given three minutes.
Mayor, I move that we close public comment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, that public comment period is closed. We'll move into the action item, approved resolution number 2024 R-13, approving amendments to the fiscal year 2024 general fund and other funds as necessary. Entertain a motion if there is one.
Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution 2024-R-13, amending the fiscal year 2024 budget for the general fund, capital projects fund, water fund, sewer fund, stormwater fund, fleet fund, and information technology fund as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rory, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Billings.
Yes, Glover.
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gell?
Yes.
And Billings?
Yes.
Okay, that carries, thank you. All right, move into our one action item of the night, consider resolution number 2024 R-15, calling on the resignation of- and consider resolution number 2024 R-14 approving the replacement of the Sewer Division CCTV Close-Circuit Television Truck and Equipment. As a reminder, Glenn presented on that at our last meeting and asked to place that on the consent agenda. Unless there's any questions for Glenn or changes to those meeting minutes, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, a motion, we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rory, when you're ready, if you'd call roll, please.
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
And Billings.
Yes.
Okay, that carries. Thank you. All right, move into our one action item of the night, consider resolution number 2024 R-15 calling on the resignation of Utah State Board of Education member Natalie Klein. Matt, when you're ready.
I'll just, from the chair, just give a quick, as many of you'll recall, on February 6th, Natalie Klein, who is the District 9 member of the Utah State Board of Education, made some comments online that, I think some would say was bullying, and I guess I would say it's bullying. And immediately after that, the council indicated that there is an interest in us providing a letter to Ms. Klein indicating that the actions that she took were not acceptable for someone in her position, and in that letter, the council sort of summed up their opinions that it would be appropriate for her to resign. That letter was not an official action of the city but a summary of the opinions of the individual council members. Subsequent to that, a council member requested that we retake up this issue as a formal action, which is the resolution that is presented to you this evening. It outlines the issues and steps that have occurred since the February 6th event, and would, if approved by the council, would act as a formal demand for the resignation of Natalie Klein from her seat on the Utah State Board of Education. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
So just my thoughts on it, on why it came up, you know, I made the news with it, kind of unintentionally. I didn't, I didn't know how that was going to play out. And because of that, I had city council members from, you know, I don't necessarily want to say who or what because not all of them got, you know, resolutions passed in their own seat or not, but they wanted to thank not just me but Midvale in general. They thought it was very impressive that we were able to work in a coordinated effort quickly on an issue. Every single one was positive. I didn't hear, you know, a negative. And I feel a little bit guilty because one of those cities I was pretty negative about a couple of weeks ago, so I don't know if you remember or not, I was harsh towards one of our neighbor cities. And they were the most gracious. But it was sort of pointed out that it wasn't sort of the formal, but they were glad, in fact, some cities used it sort of as a starting point, which I thought was, you know, interesting. But I do think it was not a formal process done in the public, right? It was, the only way to sort of do something quickly, I do think, having something with a, you know, in the public comment, in the public sphere, and just reiterate, you know, reiterate, reiterating what we said is all we need to do. That was my thought.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll just put on the record that, for those who don't know, that the particular comments that the school board member mentioned seem to call into question the gender of a child, a student, for which, being a member of the school board, her job is to protect children and to protect students. So, some people have asked, you know, why are we wading into this topic? Well, one, Natalie Klein represents a good deal of residents in Midvale, for better or worse, mostly for worse. So, you know, it's, it's not just like, you know, there's some, there's some rogue elected official somewhere out there. Like, this person represents a good number of residents here in Midvale, and to pick on, well, I shouldn't even say pick on, she bullied a person who she deemed to be transgender without having any sort of facts or evidence behind that or before reaching out to the family. It just shows a lack of care that she should take in her job as a Utah school board member. So, you know, I thought we spoke with a unanimous voice. I think we were the first city, you know, to issue a statement, and I agree that, you know, this action, calling for a formal resignation, seeing, I think she might represent like 40% of Midvale. So, you know, the responses I've gotten have been all, I don't know anyone who's come to her defense on this issue, and hopefully, you know, we can speak with a unanimous voice again. And it's very telling to me that Ms. Klein responded to our initial resolution and, you know, wanted us to undo what we did. You know, I would challenge her to try to undo what she's done. I think that's more important. And also, the fact that she is not here tonight, knowing that this is on the agenda to speak for herself, give her perspective if she has one, is very telling. I think the email that she sent to us was very performative, and she sent that same email to every other city who criticized her as well, and to my knowledge, hasn't shown up to any of their meetings either. So, I just wanted to put that on the record. I support this resolution.
And it should be noted that I also invited Ms. Klein today.
And as did I. Okay, if there's no other questions, comments, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2024 R-15 calling for the resignation of Utah State Board of Education member Natalie Klein.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rory, if you'd call roll, please.
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
Billings.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
And Robinson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. All right, we don't have a closed session tonight, but we do have an RDA. We do have an RDA, but what I mean is we don't have a council closed session. We do have an RDA closed session once we get there. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn, and then we'll jump into RDA.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, adjourn. Welcome, everybody. 7:52 PM, I'll call this meeting to order. I'm sure these lovely folks in the audience are going, what are you doing? We're just jumping from one meeting to another, just part of the fun legalities of government. So, with that, Rory, if you would call roll, please.
Yes, Board Member Glover.
Here.
Billings.
Here.
Gettle.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
And Robinson.
Here.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into public comments. If any person is wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda tonight, they may step forward to the microphone at this point and state their name for the record. Do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing none, move into consent, just with one item, consider minutes of February 20th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Rory, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Board Member Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Billings.
Yes.
And Robinson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Move into our action item of the night, consider resolution number 2024-07 RDA approving the term sheet for business loan agreement between the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City and the Bambino LLC.
Thank you, Board and Mayor. I am bringing before the Board the approval of the Bambino Business Loan, which was presented as a discussion at our last meeting. As a refresher, the Bambino is looking to go into the Vincent Drug Building, as we've been calling it, on the northern side of that building. This is a restaurant that will offer Neapolitan-style woodfire pizza as well as desserts. They're hoping to create a hub where people can come and relax and have great food for both lunch and dinner. The allowable uses for the loan include the tenant improvements, equipment, marketing, and working capital. It includes a variety of things, including paint, signage, plumbing, finishes to the garden and rooftop patio, and then equipment to allow them to function as a restaurant, as well as flower and prep tables and shelvings. The proposed terms include a loan amount of $250,000 for a seven-year term with a 0% interest rate. They are pledging 80% equity from a personal real estate property, and a deed of trust will be recorded against that, and we will be in second position on that. The first payment will be the sooner of the first day of the first full month following the opening of the business, or July 1st. They will pay equal monthly payments based on the outstanding loan amount, and they agree to submit receipts, invoices, and other evidence as requested to verify that they are utilizing the funds for the permitted uses. Any questions?
Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we pass resolution number 2024-07 RDA approving the term sheet for a business loan agreement between the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City and the Bambino LLC.
Second.
Motion and a couple of seconds. Any further discussion? Rory, if you'd call roll, please.
Yes, Board Member Billings.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Gettle.
Yes.
That passes. Don't spend it all in one place.
That was a tough sell today.
Actually, do spend it all in one place.
All right, we'll move into our discussion items of the night. Item A, discussion regarding a facade grant proposal for 7584 South Main Street.
Yes, so I have two facade grants that I'll be going over to tonight. The first is the building located at 7584 South Main Street. Let's see, probably, this is the best picture to have. So, the present picture is what it looks like right now. I believe that there was a church occupying that space for a while. That building has since been purchased by Rick Service, and he has plans to renovate the building to host a food and beverage business inside. And there's a past picture which some of you may have seen around City Hall. I believe that is the Dolls Meat Market. I don't know if there's any relation there.
No relation.
No, okay.
It's the only reason he has this job.
He is harsh on you about your job.
We appreciate you.
I think Matt does a great job.
Yeah, Matt is great.
He has the full support of the city council.
We need a little PR training for our mayor. Rory knows how I feel.
So, the scope of work as part of the grant application is to put in a new opening for an entry, which would include the structural updates that they would need, brick repair, a new entry door, new windows, and then the installation of that exterior patio, which includes a pergola, fire pit, and railings, as well as new exterior lighting. I just want to note, because it wasn't in the actual scope, but, and we've talked to Rick about this, but all of the improvements that are being made will be done while not removing or hindering the existing architectural details that exist along the top of the building. So, that is included in the term sheet. This is just a full breakdown of the budget, and kind of goes more into detail on the scope of work. In order to qualify for the grant, you need to fulfill the three program objectives, the first being the noticeable contribution to the revitalization efforts. The facade improvements are going to be taking place on a building that was constructed in 1903, so it's been here for a while. It will help activate what is currently a vacant building on the corner of Depot and Main. It also must be consistent with the aspirational character and vision of Main Street. We believe that the addition of an outdoor patio space, as well as the updated front facade, will really contribute to the look and feel that we're hoping to have on Main Street. It'll also play a key role in attracting the desired food and beverage businesses that we're hoping to have in the area. And then last, support and enhance pedestrian accessibility. The proposed improvements, which will include the outdoor dining experience, will help increase pedestrian and consumer traffic as the visibility of people on the street will be enhanced. I brought the grant application before the facade grant committee. They are recommending funding $75,000 as it is a corner lot with two facades facing public right-of-ways or parking lots, as well as an easement term of 10 years on the building, or on the improvements of the building. Additional terms, it's a reimbursement grant that shall not exceed 50% of the total cost. It should only be used for the improvements that I've noted in the scope of work. The grantee must agree to maintain and keep in good repair the facade or, and the improvements. And if the building is currently vacant, which it is, the applicant will have to demonstrate a plan for achieving occupancy to secure a tenant within 12 months of the project completion date. And the fiscal impact, so I'll also go into this a little later, but when we put together the budget, we were kind of anticipating two $50,000 grants, so single facade projects, and one corner lot project. The reverse has happened, and we've had two corner lot projects and one single facade. So for this, the current budget as it stands right now is at $100,000. If we approve this grant, we will provide funds up to $75,000 as a reimbursement, leaving the overall facade improvement program at $25,000 for the fiscal year of 2024. However, in looking at the budget line item that includes this project, there's more than enough money to increase this program budget without having to do a budget amendment, and so we would be, we would increase that administratively. But I'll go over that again in the, in the next discussion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Rick is also here. If you have any questions for him?
Rick, I've got a question for you, but if you'd come up. What's your completion timeline goal on that?
With construction materials, you know, on a, on high demand, the real question really is the windows, and they tell us that they'll be about nine weeks. So from the time we get, that, get the openings cut so they can do a final measurement, then the windows should be here at nine weeks, and then everything just kind of will, will be rolling right after that. So, I would anticipate after the windows, or after the openings are cut, about 12 weeks, somewhere in there.
Have you thought about a name for this establishment yet?
No, I really don't have a tenant yet, so.
So you'd let them come with their idea for the name and space, okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments for Rick or Kate?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much.
I, I can just add, being on the facade committee, which is actually very fun. It's one of my favorite committee assignments, so thank you for appointing me to that. But there was near-unanimous excitement and enthusiasm for this project. You know, it's going to be, it looks like a nice little place to have a drink, have some food, if that's what you prefer. But yeah, the board was pretty excited about this one.
Thank you. All right, then we'll move into item B, discussion regarding a facade grant proposal for 7696 South Main Street.
Yes, so this is also, well, also known as the Vincent Drug Building. I am presenting this as a discussion as well. We have seen renderings of this in the past. There are a few changes which I'll go over in a minute. So the scope of work includes a new opening for the entryway, brick repair, painting, architectural elements, new windows, a refurbishing of the Vincent Park sign, lighting, and hardware. You will see an updated term sheet in front of you. The lighting and hardware was missed on that term sheet, but was included in the original budget, so that's been updated. Here are some past pictures of the Vincent Drug Building. It's actually, out of all the buildings that have had the same business in there, they've had a variety of different signs, but this is what it currently looks like. And this is the rendering that we have for the facade improvement. There is a very large noticeably different thing about the front, and that is the Vincent Park sign that they had in one of the renderings that we originally showed. In talking with the applicant, as well as cactus and tropicals. In talking with the applicant, as well as Cactus and Tropicals, and bringing that to the committee, it made sense that Cactus and Tropicals would want to have their name in front of the storefront, but that Jeff Beck, or the Beck's, are going to do everything that they can to restore the original Vincent sign that is still sicking out. And I believe the idea is to have it say fountain, desserts, and pizza, or plants.
Yeah, I guess it'd be probably.
Oh, like plants, pizza.
Something to that effect.
Yeah. So it'll, it'll keep the same look and feel on there. They are still keeping the three distinct facades on the, on the building, and then they are keeping the lighter color above. I believe the rendering we showed before only had what I've been calling the snow cones above the Cactus and Tropical building, but they are, they've decided to extend that across. In addition, the applicant is also going to put a plaque on the side of the, or on the front of the building, that gives a little brief history of the building and Vincent Drugs, so it'll also have a nod there. Here's the overall budget for the improvements. How it'll fulfill the program objectives, these improvements are going to restore one of the most well-known buildings on Main Street. It'll also help to attract much-needed tenants on the street, helping to activate this currently vacant and blighted building. It'll help solidify having the tenants of Cactus and Tropicals, as well as a pizzeria. As far as being consistent with the aspirational character and vision of Main Street, the restoration of the brick, as well as the preservation of the iconic and unique architectural elements, like the ice cream cone, and the rounded entrance of the Vincent Drug Building will help to preserve that historic feel. And as far as supporting and enhancing the pedestrian accessibility, the intended use of the building as a retail, event space, and restaurant, these improvements will do a lot to activate and stimulate foot traffic. The committee has recommended the full amount, as long as it does not exceed 50% of $50,000. The easement terms would be 30 years on the Vincent sign, and then 10 years on all other improvements. Again, the terms, it is a reimbursement grant that shall not exceed 50% of the total cost. The funding shall only be used for those improvements included in the scope of work. They must maintain and keep in good repair the facade and improvements for a time period of 30 years. And then, if the building is vacant, then they have to demonstrate a plan for achieving occupancy. So like I said before, the current budget is $100,000, and the grant before was for $75,000, and this one would be for 50. If we, if the board were to choose to approve both grants, the program budget will need to be increased by $25,000. This adjustment can be done administratively, as the current Main Street CDA budget can accommodate this increase without going over budget. And then questions, comments, and concerns? Kaitlin Beck is also here, if you have questions about the design or any of the improvements.
I like the snow cone all the way across. I also really like the three distinct, they're very like rich colors that, so I, you know, sometimes we see plans, and they don't always work out. I really hope it's close to that, just because I think that's cool. It'll be very easy to point people towards, because it's a little different, but not like, you know, crazy different, you know, just new. So I like it.
There was a lot of debate among committee members on this one, not that we didn't love other versions of this, but we felt that this was the one that really keeps the character of Main Street, and also honors Vincent, so also honors, you know, what, why these buildings are historic in the first place. And to be honest, you know, as many times as I've seen these buildings, I never even noticed, I call them ice cream cones, because there's going to be an ice cream place there. So, you know, it's, it's nice that we're uncovering history that, you know, some of us may never even have noticed before, so I love it.
All right, any more questions? Or any questions?
July 1, Ray?
That's our goal, well, we need to be a little bit sooner than that, our hope, but we're kind of in the same spot as Rick, with windows is going to be the clincher, how long that is going to be. We're hoping to order quick.
Making pizza July 1st, come hell or high up.
We'll be there. So windows or not?
We'll be there.
Are you going to have the little cookies with ice cream too?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be there.
We just had a, for anybody online, we just had a promise for pizza by July 1st.
By July, we all heard it.
A guarantee, it's always a guarantee.
That puts a lot of pressure. That's our goal, and that's where we hope to make that happen. I just want to say really quickly, Rick, thank you, and all of you, thank you. I, I think nothing could be better for Main Street than all of this triggering quickly and happening together. A lot of the restaurants we talked to were like, oh, we just don't want to be the first, you know? They fear being the pioneer. And when so much is happening at the same time, it just creates such an awesome energy, and I know it'll make everyone more successful and it works. So thank you guys for making all of this happen. And Rick, thanks for doing this. We're excited to see people. It's awesome. Okay, were you going to ask a question?
Yeah, just real quick, I know the answer, but for everyone else, can you explain with the Cactus and Tropicals building, what you're doing with the window, and how that's going to change a little bit?
Yeah, so our initial picture, and we've yet to really solidify this, so I hesitate to be too specific. But with our, well, and these, these windows are a little bit different, but with our initial picture, we were going to maintain that little boxwood spot in front of the windows, and we are going to try to bring the windows out on top of that. It may not work, but we're going to try to, just so that, because they have, just to draw people into the store more. So we were originally trying to stick with the character, and then we thought it will be more aesthetically pleasing to have them come out. So that is our hope, it may change a little bit, but we're going to try for that. And we were originally, yeah, like Kate said, the picture we had shown you in our past meeting, we just had the, we were cutting off the ice cream cone, and we consulted with the designer for Cactus, and she gave us this idea, and I feel so much better about it. I feel like it does make it feel more substantial and more historic, and so we really feel great, but sorry for the change. But I think it's going to be better.
I guess, could you say, if, if you're unable to build the windows to come out?
Then it'll just stay as they are, where it will just be replacing windows and keeping that, if we can't make it come out to what it's at right now, if that makes sense. So it's currently has like a flat window with boxwoods in front, and we're going to try to put them on top of that. If it doesn't work, they'll be on top of the box, like as it is now. So it'll be one or the other.
So the worst-case scenario is, what's there now but an improvement upon that?
Yes, yep, yeah. Thanks for specifying that, that's good. Any other questions?
Seeing none.
Okay, thanks so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. All right, we do have a closed session tonight for strategy sessions to discuss the purchase-exchange or lease of real property. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for that reason.
Mayor, I move that we enter a closed session for the reason you just mentioned.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Rory, would you call roll?
Yes, board member Billings.
Yes, Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Gettle.
Yes.
Okay, that passes, and we'll move into closed session.